Thank you, everyone, for coming to the May 2023 Mount Jewell Borough Council meeting. I see a lot of faces out there, so we are going to open, as always, with public address. But I want to remind people that we do a, there is a five-minute limit on comments. I will be tracking because we don't want to be here all night. And I ask that everyone please be respectful of other people's time and comments. If you have a response or feedback, you can go next. With that, since we didn't do sign-ups or anything, is there anyone who would like to volunteer to go first? Mr. Hyden?
My name is John Hyden. I live on Gallup Avenue. I've lived at six Gallup Avenue for almost twenty-five years. And in the twenty-five years that I've lived here, I've never had a problem with my sewer line until Aqua put a new water line up the middle of the road. After they put a new water line up the road, I started having sewer backup problems pretty regularly, to the point where I bought my own personal jetter, and I would jet it every two days. And after they paved the road, I had Road Roader come over and camret, and he said the line was crushed out under the road. So I called a PA one call, and the utility companies come and marked the sewer line and the water line and the gas line. And the sewer line was not marked where it really was. But I dug it up, and my break was right next to the new water line. In fact, the main sewer line is on the other side of the water line, but I didn't go that far. I went to where the break was, and I repaired it. And I backfilled it with limestone, and I tamped it with a plate tamper. And it was late October when I did that, and there was no blacktop materials available to repair the street. So I compacted it with two A limestone and then DSA limestone on top of that. And in February, I had a problem with the borough trucks plowing my lawn up eight feet into my grass. And I took the current council president down there, and I showed him. And I had to put reflectors up, and they loaded them right over. And Joe puts reflectors across the street on the east side of the street, and they have never been disturbed all winter. And peeled my lawn up, and I complained about it. Three days later, I got this letter in the mail from the borough. I'm not sure if any of you people are aware of this or not, but it states that has been brought to my attention by several residents that when you repaired your sewer line and cut the street last fall, you neglected to repair the street. I have one resident who walks in all types of weather, and they almost fell in a hole in this area. I have enclosed a picture of the area that I'm writing about. As you can see, it can be a problem for those utilizing the street while walking or driving. There's the picture that came in the mail. And maybe you can show me whether there's a hole or a problem there. I don't, I don't see anything. But anyway, it says it is imperative for you to repair this area of the street as soon as paving material becomes available. If it is not repaired by May fifteenth of 2023, the borough will contract someone to repair it, and the bill will be sent to you. Thank you for your advance, for your cooperation and assistance in this matter. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to council or me. And it's signed by the borough manager. And so the reason I came here tonight is, 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 my first complaint is I didn't break my sewer line. It didn't break by itself. It was broken by a compactor when they put the, put the water line in. And so, and so I had to have a sewer, and so I fixed it. And now it's fixed professionally and properly, and it has a clean out, and there shouldn't be a problem there ever again. So today's May first, and I went to IA, and they're still not making blacktop. They don't know when they're gonna be. They're waiting for two new screens to come in. And I think May fifteenth is an unrealistic goal for the borough to give me. And they wrote me the letter in February sixteenth. You can't fix, you can't blacktop the road in February, you know? And so, and so here it is, May first, and you can't even buy the blacktop yet. So I think that's an unrealistic goal, and I'd like to know what the council's opinion is on the whole matter.
All right, thank you. As far as the deadline, if, if it is something that you are working on and you're having problems, I wouldn't see that there would be a problem with, you know, as long as we're aware of where you're at, and you're trying to get blacktop, and you're, you're having these issues, that that could be extended. I, I don't, unless anyone else sees why that would be an issue. I mean, if you're, if you're actively working on it, that's what we're, we're hoping for.
Well, actually, I haven't done anything to it since I fixed it last October because I would have patched it last year, but I couldn't buy anything to put on there. And so I put the best material available down. And, and today I went, and they, and they're still not making it, you know?
Well, that's, but, but in that regard, you are working on it because you looked into it, and it's not something you're able to do right now. So we, we appreciate that, and that that is before the deadline we gave you. And if it is something you're still working towards, as soon as you're able to, I, I would not see a problem with hanging there with you on that.
All right, thank you. Well, 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 I got your attention. I took you down here and showed you where my lawn was getting plowed up, and I never heard anything back from you. And since then, it's been plowed up twice more. We're making a headway on how we can resolve to keep the snowplow on the road.
I, I, I came down here, I discussed it with, with Barb and the guys. I drew, I drew pictures of what the property situation was. I explained the whole thing to them. I, I was told they would do their best. So if, if they're still having troubles out there, I can continue to, to tell them that it's not happening. It isn't working, so their best isn't good enough right now, and they need to keep working on it. But it, it was addressed with them immediately after I went out there. I did not go back out there to see how it went, and I apologize. I didn't follow up with you, so.
I parked my truck at the edge of the driveway, so if the snow was deep, you'd be able to see where the edge of the road is. And they went way over into my lawn and out around my truck, back over into my lawn. So, you know, I think it's intentional. And the reflectors I put out got loaded over. You can't miss those reflectors. You know, they stick three feet up out of the snow, and they're flattened right over. And the reflectors on the east side of the street have never been disturbed all winter. So I don't know how that could be an accident, but I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
June first or something.
Well, stay in condition with us.
John?
What, we were discussing, what, what, what do you think?
Chris is proposing a, a new deadline.
A new deadline. I would say no earlier than June fifteenth.
Do you think, do you think thirty days would, on that, it would be sufficient?
Well, like, I mean, I don't see why they wouldn't have their plant running by then. They'd be losing a lot of money.
They're supposed to have it up by today, but parts haven't come in.
So if you're comfortable with that?
So then you're aware of it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. So we'll, we'll talk to the maintenance guys about the plowing.
Yeah, we'll talk to them again about it.
Okay, I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
I think it's important to remember that the borough does have a right of way to maintain and plow back. And the biggest concern, the biggest complaint, again, every year is borough guys aren't plowing back far enough. So when somebody's yard gets scarified, sod gets rolled up, it is important to remember we have a right of way on all borough streets. And if we choose, we can bring a grader in, pull the sod, and put gravel down, and make it accessible, just like the state does. We don't want to do that, so if you do get a rut or you do get sod rolled up, understand that we have to make it passable for two vehicles and emergency vehicles. And that's, this is where we live. We don't, in Florida, we live in northwest Pennsylvania sometimes, sod gets rolled up.
And it's tough, too. That's on the inside curve. And naturally, their duallys are gonna go over off the road when we're trying to plow the road itself. On the other side, it's a, oh, so the duallys are out and the plow's going in, so that's why it doesn't get.
And you can't see the road under the snow, obviously.
It pushes the front of the truck, whatever, whatever angle you have the plow at.
Regardless, the duallys are gonna go into the.
Absolutely. It'd be the first person to complain if we didn't have a light enough. I bargained that truck there, and I'm sorry you left. That was just an attempt to be obstructive.
All right, well, we're gonna move on with a lot of people here who would like to speak next.
Hi, Ken.
All right.
Just for everybody's info, I'm Doug Keller. I live up on Short Street. And I'm here tonight to talk about the community garden location. And I did put a couple notes together, a thought's got on paper. Last time I tried winging a presentation in front of a bunch of people, thank God Chuck was there to bail me out because I floundered.
I don't remember that.
Oh, it would have been, it would have been one of the coalition meetings.
Okay, that's been a while.
At the fire hall. Oh, I remember it well. All right, so anyways, thank you for listening. First, I, I'd like to start, so we don't spend a bunch of time unnecessarily debating the character of the homeowner that donated the, the, the property. She's a wonderful person and clearly cares about our community. The offer given to use her property to the community garden in this day and age is almost unheard of. The reason why we are here, however, is to discuss the lack of logistical planning, in our opinion. From what I'm hearing, this has already passed. None of us were notified. I don't know, as though I'm, I'm hearing that it was in the paper or it was on Facebook. And to those of us who don't do the paper or Facebook like that, we, I was blindsided Friday. I heard about it Friday night that this was going in. So when, when exactly were the people that were gonna be most affected notified? And what I'm also told is that Short Street is going to be the main entrance and exit to the garden. So what is the plan in place to support the, the traffic?
There is no, there's not going to be any parking.
Not just the parking, but the, all the additional extra people that are gonna be coming down through there. And the reason why I mention this is because none of us on Short Street leash our dogs. Derek's dogs are welcome in mine, unfortunately, mine.
Your dogs are welcome in mine.
Brings his presence whenever he's outside. We have a lot of privacy concerns up there with all the additional people that are planning on being there. And what control plans are in place to keep the visitors actually in the community garden? Mine is right there. And I don't want to bore anybody with the amount of time and money that I've put into my garden this year, but it's a lot of effort. And a little bit of time that we've had in this spring, I've got a lot done. I'm pretty proud of it. So I've got some concerns about that as well. So in summary, I want to reiterate that we don't reject the premise of a community garden in any way. We agree it's a great idea, a noble gesture on the homeowner's part to offer the location. But unfortunately, at this time, I will not permit access to the land from my property. So I'll, I'll open that up to anybody else that wants to share it.
All right, so from the borough's perspective, which is the only one we have here, and this is my understanding. Short Street is a borough street. It's a public street. Public right of way. Anyone can use it. It does access that property. Short Street connects to that property according to the pictures we've seen.
I'm Floyd Roth. I own the property at the end of it. Short Street stops. And that, that survey's off all those people's properties. I have a private property. I've lived there for sixty-seven years. We've done here. You can see the fourth parcel there.
So that part is your property?
It's mine. I, I don't have social media either, so I wasn't aware of it till, like, Friday.
I mean, if this, if this is.
Your property overruns asphalt or something. Oh, it has, yeah. That's where you used to park where you park, you know? Yeah. The only time there was ever a road, there's, there used to be a barn there, and that's where they cut all the stone for the, for the church. That's where the church, they cut all the stone. So they had to make, you have dirt playing along the edge of the yard where they plowed with their stones. That was back in nineteen seventy, seventy-one, whatever year they started. But yeah, that's, when we were kids, you know, I had three brothers. That's where we parked our cars. Whenever the street ended, we parked in the sidewalk from the old house and went right up to that spot.
All right, this is accurate, and it's private property.
I mean, you can, and it's got, like, Cegaleen is the property owner, used to be the property owner of the person that has the garden, the ones that put the garden in.
Yeah.
And Torres Swanson's where Derek lives, and Roy Nelson is where he lives. Doug. But all I can give you is the survey.
Right.
You know? And that's private property, and I don't want the liability. I have enough trouble on, last year I got a letter from the borough on garbage, regular. No one's lived there for thirteen years, so she's very nicely, we work together good. I picked it all up. Next week I went up, picked it all up again. Next week, I mean, what today is just from the housing development. There's only so much I can do, and I paid to get rid of all of that. And I, we were up there last night. I took pictures. And I still clean it up. I don't come down here and complain, you know, but now I guess I'm.
Are you, you're, you're pretty sure it's coming from the?
Oh, baby diapers and stuff. My kid's forty. You don't use them. You know, baby seats. I can't say, I can't say animals can be dragging it.
I mean, that's, that, that's a separate issue from what we got, but it's obviously something that needs to be addressed, and it should be addressed to the county.
I don't wanna run into the same problem on the other property line with the garden. This is my property.
I can appreciate that, but we, you know, between us, we should be able to get a hold of the county and, and.
And I'm sure it goes out to Howard's, too.
Did they get a letter about you?
Did they get a letter, too? Okay. But we pick it up when we're up there. We go pick it up when we're home. But it's still, that isn't addressing the problem, you know, it's.
There's more if you slide to the left, I think, too. Left or right, you'll see more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's.
But we've been, and stuff comes down here complaining. The lady was very nice, so we just.
But I think the complaint should go to the, to the county, the housing development, because they're the ones that put that. I mean, you know, we, we can assist you with it, and we can ask Barb to look into it with, with them. She's nodding right now, but we, but that, that's gonna have to be addressed through the county housing people because.
I will contact housing.
Okay, it's just, if they've got dumpsters down there, I don't know. You think they can?
I don't either, but we'll, we'll get a load of them.
No, they have, they know.
They're gonna pick it up.
They have, um, it's company.
Private.
But anyways, it's something for you to look at that, you know, you can search the further courthouse. This survey was off of all these people plus the, the property owner. And you can't access that property without crossing mine or the, the Short Street.
And.
The Short Street ends.
Correctly, that seems pretty cut and dry. If that's the, the property, it's private property. You have the right to.
Yeah, and I don't want to go through.
Disallow that.
On the other side, the pictures I showed you, on the other side, you know, trash, and I just, and the liability of it.
But I, I know that, that stuff that, that, that has been addressed about the garden, but all of that.
You know, if she wants to have a garden, I, we can't stop her from having a garden. It's tough, went from her, calling that, or whatever street she runs.
And then any other, other questions or concerns about, that, that came up about the planning and, and liability and all that stuff? That is, that's something to be discussed with her and with the, the coalition that's involved with it. I know they've had meetings about it. You guys obviously haven't been aware of that. So some of those questions might be answerable, but they're not something that's necessarily answerable here.
Okay.
Just, it's, it's not relevant to, to us in that regard, it's private property. Yes, sir.
Chandel is having a community garden meeting next Thursday. And if you, you know, go to her and just say, you know, that she'll, she'll be fine with that. She didn't plan on having any parking, you know, on Short Street. She just wanted people walking in. I mean, she has, she, we obviously can just walk down McQuallen and walk on her property. There's no, there's no problem with that.
Yeah, that'd be the best thing.
And honestly, there's only gonna be maybe four or five people at the most there at one time anyways.
All right, so for the purpose of, of our meeting, that's something that you all can discuss outside of here.
Okay.
If there's anything relevant to us as it comes along, appreciate this. Thank you for clarifying some of that. We're happy to get involved, but as it's a private garden on private property involving the neighbors, that's something that you all will have to discuss and, and manage privately amongst yourselves, to my understanding. Is there anyone next who would like to address council?
Just let everybody know, there's, we finally got a molly phasic blood drive going, which will be June third. And it's, uh, we'll have these posters up around town, but you have to call between May eighth and the twelfth to sign up to get on it. We can't have any walk-ins. They have to do this ahead of time because they privately contract out the blood work now, so the PMC does.
All right, anyone else?
Is there anything related to that?
I mean, the only thing, I'll, I'll just speak real quick if you don't mind.
No, it's fine.
All I'm gonna do is just say ditto to my fellow neighbors. My property has nothing to do with where Chandel's touches, and I understand that.
Oh, I know.
And from the get-go, as soon as I heard of the inception, I think it's a great idea. We just don't agree with the access point, and that's really all it comes down to.
Well, and if it's his property, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm confident that there's support for the project. It's just the logistics that need to be worked out, the details, and I'm confident that you all will make that happen, and, and we can have this in whatever way we need to work on it for everyone. Carolyn, do you want to go next?
Yeah, um, this is just real quick, and you don't have to make a decision tonight. I'm just bringing this up. At our last Trail Club meeting, the MJ to KB Trail Club, we talked about purchasing a banner to commemorate our 2023 Trail of the Year Award, and we would like to put it over Center Street if there's any way to do that. And the reason for that location would be just to kind of draw attention to the trail and that. We haven't purchased the banner. We're thinking about it. You can think about it. Get back to me. You know, we would purchase the banner. I don't know about how, how we would put it up. I haven't even gone down Center Street to see how that might work, but anyways, we like to do something like that. So that's, that's all I have.
As long as she's on, off the trails.
Yes.
With being in the public, having people where what's been happening with four-wheelers and motorcycles, it's been terrorizing the trail. I walk it a lot. I've been, you know, I'm getting in shape, go out to New Mexico with my scouts, and it's a shame to see where they just do Brody's on it. It's, you know, that's, they're doing it on purpose. You know, that's not where they just got on and took off down the trail. It's purposely done. And if anyone knows, the state police needs some names and whatnot to be able to identify. If you see them out there, you know who it is, let Carolyn know at the least, and she will contact the state police because they have to have ID on this to be able to, um, pursue it, you know, to be able to, and it's, what it's gonna take is some of those kids that are doing it because it's the youth, is having them pinched, and it's coming out of the parents' pockets. You know, they have to pay for it. Maybe they'll start telling their kids they gotta, you know, respect things.
There were a few pictures circulating on Facebook. Are those on the Trail Club page?
Yeah, um, also, some of those pictures have been turned into the state police, and I haven't heard that from Sergeant Kirk yet, but he is willing to work with us. Of course, the state police is understaffed, so he wants you to report it when someone's out there. Well, by the time you would call them and they come out, it's not gonna happen.
Right, but if anybody has not yet looked at those pictures.
Please let me know because, you know, it's a shame, plus we're worried about somebody getting hurt. I guess one young person went, almost ran over somebody's dog that was on a leash, you know, legally on a leash, and we just can't have that kind of stuff happening on the trail. One other thing real quick about the trail I should mention, so it's in the notes. Barb knows about it. We did start a wildflower garden next to our new pavilion on Hacker Street. And if anyone wants to donate plants to that garden or put some plants in, you're more than welcome. We're just trying to make it look nice and clean that area up a little bit, so.
I did post that on there.
Oh, good. Thank you, Barb. Thank you.
All right, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Kelly?
I have information for memorial bricks for Heritage Park, so I will turn that in from the, um, Mountain Heritage Coalition. Also, music on six. I need to get with Barb regarding the dates that we are proposing. This will be our second year.
Have anybody gave her the date?
Okay, if you gave her the dates, then awesome.
No, you didn't.
Okay, then you did not give her the dates.
You did not give me dates.
I may not have.
We are proposing six concerts as we did in 2022. Um, we are hoping to have live music like we did last year, um, and then just raise, um, funding for the amphitheater or, and/or the pocket park that we wish to refer to. So those dates I will sit with Barb and make sure there's no conflict from other organizations. The first one is June fifteenth, the second is June twenty-ninth, so.
It's two weeks, every two weeks after that.
More benches, um, so there are more benches being proposed for raffles, et cetera. But also during the Swedish Festival, there will be a trail, um, marathon, and the Hilltop Heritage will be receiving funding from that and then move straight to the benches for Main Street. But also, we are looking at longer, possible longer benches at the park through the grant to see if that would be a better opportunity rather than the six-foot, to see if they have ten-foot ones up around these buildings that they're, that they're looking at at Community Park. Friend and reminder for sprinkling is May twentieth. Wanting to know, material comes and goes for the sidewalks. Do we know? Are they complete? Are they gone? Do we know? I reached out to them last year when they were, you know, they kind of had an idea when they were gonna be gone completely, and I don't want to interfere, and I don't plan to have the sprinkling vendors at the fire hall park a lot, but I'm not sure if they're.
We need to provide some, yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, we have a final punch list. We did the final inspection. They have some things to be taken care of. But as far as, um, construction material, there's very little that should be coming back, so I, I can't see a problem with that.
Anyone is in one way and then, okay, so thank you for that. For the library, uh, we had discussed possibly doing memorial bricks around the sidewalk. Um, I don't know who I need to sit down to see if that's a thing that, um, the borough wishes for that, um, for memorial bricks to be purchased around the sidewalk all the way to the back. So I don't know who I talked with to walk that out, so everybody understands what we're talking about and that we're all on the same page.
He's gonna do them along the edge of the sidewalk itself?
Yeah.
Does anybody have an issue with that? Even?
And that's your main sidewalk, not the sidewalk.
I think, uh, Barb should probably go up and block it since she's a borough manager, uh.
Just being on the whole, from a borough standpoint, we don't, I don't think we gotta bring it up. There's another meeting, so I think it's fine. I don't think we have an objection to it, so as long as you guys work it out.
It's just your guys' property, so that's why, we have to make sure, then, to make sure we're on the same page of.
But I think that's fine.
All right, and we usually have a bench out front at the library. I don't, I know that Megan was working on something, so I'm wondering if that's why our bench wasn't put out front, but I don't know who to talk to about that.
I think they must have missed that one.
No, they, Megan had, there was some saying there, Rick, and then.
Okay, that's what I figured. Okay, well, we can move that. It was just kind of, hey, here it is. Okay, thank you.
Good. All right, is there anybody else wishing to address council? All right, um, we're going to semi-close public comment, but we're also gonna make a minor adjustment to the agenda because we have guests here. Chuck Parr graciously invited some constables to go talk to us. We had brought this up in our previous meeting, but rather than have. All right, sir, governor, thanks for being civil.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're supportive. We're very supportive.
Okay. Um, we're gonna go ahead and allow the constables the time now if they want to pay for that.
Yeah, I invited, uh, Constable Tanner and his associate, Mr. Sutton, to come over and, and just maybe give us a, a brief overlay of, of their services, and they provided this handout. Uh, we had talked about possibly, you know, it. Uh we had talked about possibly, uh you know, if it was something we could utilize to assist in uh ordinance enforcement, or perhaps Swedish festival parade thing. So I, I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll ask you guys to maybe, if you wanna explain what things you can or cannot do, if you wanna expound upon this at all, whatever you, whatever you think is necessary.
If there's a need for ser- serving any papers and stuff, that we can do. We can't write anybody up, I mean, cause even to write somebody up, you gotta have a number, that's why. You know, like doing ordinance and stuff, we can't do that, but we can serve the papers on ordinance. Or if you need somebody present there to do something, we can do that. Uh I mean, we're peacekeeping, so if somebody's acting up and stuff, we can detain them, call the state police, because this is where the state police can come out, we have local PD here. But to, you know, file any charges and stuff, if, if that needs to be done, uh if, if we're covered and doing various things. As a constable, we have peacekeeping authority, we can, we can arrest without a warrant, and then we turn them over to the whatever municipality or state police in their case. Um ordinance enforcement, I can't get done, I mean, you can generate whoever you would like on most ordinance, but you'd have to have a policy and a procedure um to actually do it. There's some constables across the state who do ordinance, but that would be an offline discussion. If you guys decide you wanna do ordinance, we have either like, you know, one of our force former members would wanna do ordinance enforcement for the borough. Um typically, you guys come up with a policy on ordinances and, and an actual book with ordinances in it. Do you have something like that now?
Yes.
Yes.
So it would be just enforcing your ordinances and writing tickets, but it wouldn't be from a constable perspective. It would be as an individual perspective who would write the ordinances. If it comes back to the courts or we're serving somebody officially, then we would step in as a constable to do that.
Our, our borough manager is also our slash ordinance officer.
Okay.
And, and she writes, we were just, we.
So if I had, um I guess my question, seeing we're talking this way, if I had something that was going to the court, or I had somebody who I was afraid to serve papers to, you guys could step in, like maybe somebody who's, who's in the past has been a little bit.
Yeah, if you got something that you wanna serve to them, yeah, we could take that out and serve to them.
Okay.
You know. We serve right now from different municipalities and stuff based on, to townships or whatever. They want something to an individual who may be irate, or this or that, or sewer minute, you know, sewer authority or whatever, and they want something, they've been avoiding the registered mail, you know, and they want something delivered to a person. We can come out and do that, and we'll do it with a, an actual record, so it's enforceable by, you know, by the courts.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kinda asking what you want back, uh, cause it, it was hard to put things in writing because there's all kinds, I, I do a lot of different serving of things, and what each person wants are, is kinda different. Some people want things notarized when it comes back to them, uh some want certain other descriptions to them, some it's just, you know, served to the household, some it's, you gotta serve the individual. Uh and the other thing I kinda put down there is just kinda being aware, cause, you know, police officers are covered by a lot of stuff, you start getting somebody else like a constable. A constable's elected position, it don't mean that they have all that coverage. Now, I carry moonlighting, which means outside of the courts, I can do other things and stuff. That don't mean all constables carry moonlighting. So sometimes when people are looking at picking somebody up, these are some of the questions they don't, don't realize to ask and make sure it's in place, uh you know, the coverage for carrying a firearm. I, I mean, I've talked to guys who was doing cer- certain things, and they carried no coverage and stuff, which left the liability on the people who hired them and stuff, and we carry that and stuff. Uh when you was asking about, you know, public and stuff, clearances to, to be around kids and dealing with that. It's not always, it's not always a requirement like a constable or an Act two thirty-five, they don't have to have all that stuff. But we get that, I mean, I do a lot of transport for mental health, and I do a lot of kids and stuff. So again, we look at what, what we're doing and having the clearances for that. Also, you know, bonded if, you know, there's something in handling money and stuff. Uh and I just kinda brought those points out there because as you're looking at somebody, do they really carry this stuff? And I've known the ones getting hired, and they didn't have the stuff. And, you know, hey, if everything goes alright, you're good, but when it goes sour, uh.
Sure.
You know, what comes back. Your Act two thirty-five is, a lot of times, those guys are certified as a, as a certified officer in there, but it's a five-year thing, a lot of them don't carry insurance, so if you, you, if you're doing something like that, you need to make sure you do your homeworking, cause there's, the liability would all fall back on you guys as a borough.
That's, that's what you have, is the Act two thirty-five?
No, no. I have the Act two thirty-five, I'm also an Act two thirty-five. He's both, and I'm just certified as a, we're certified constables to the state.
What is the Act two thirty-five?
And we carry liability insurance, what's that?
What is the?
Act two thirty-five is somebody who can get certified, there's a whole process they initially have to go through, which they can do security and different things, they may be hired by different companies to do, to do different things. Of course, you know, as constables, our jurisdiction is actually the state of Pennsylvania.
Right.
Uh you know, we can do things all over the state, which I go all over the state, don't think. But uh, and they're kinda governed by whoever hires them, what kinda policies they have truly, unless it's a company that brought them together and stuff, but you know, it's. One of the relevant places, the county does the Act two thirty-five at the, at the fair every year. But those guys really have no arrest authority, number one, um I'm not sure.
So it's a security.
It's more of a security type thing, that's correct.
Okay, certification.
And I don't know if they're all bonded and licensed and insured, which we have to be.
Yeah.
We have, we all carry our liability insurance and bonding and as far as a constable.
I have a question, uh one of the things that I would like to see is, is to have a little assistance like for our, possibly for our Memorial Day Parade and during our three-day Swedish Festival. Um like we said, we have to get a Penn dot permit, and, and usually the fire police, you know, we, we block off six and, and they, they provide a detour for private traffic. Commercial traffic is stopped for the parade. Is, is there something that like, is that something you would come up and assist with for the couple of hours during Memorial Day Parade? And also, Swedish Festival for, you know, maybe selected hours during the period of time, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, just as a, as a street presence?
Yeah.
And crowd control?
Absolutely.
Those, those are types of things?
Yeah, absolutely.
You could assist with, and if, and if, and if there became a.
We're official peace officers.
A, a security issue, you could step in, even if it meant sea tension until state police arrived.
That's correct, we would detain them until the state police arrived.
Alright, that's all the questions I have, does anybody else have any?
I, I don't have any additional questions right now.
No, I think that pretty well covers it, I, I think the biggest thing that we utilize them for is the serving of paperwork, especially on the, I'd, I'd rather have something like that going out.
Yeah.
And posting homes than, than Barb, you know, for a multitude of reasons.
What we'll probably have to do, gentlemen, is, is discuss this and prob- I, I don't know how, you know, is perhaps motion some sort of authority for the borough manager to utilize their services on a as-needed basis, I would think, or, or not, right?
I mean, generally, yeah, because since it would be a cost, I would think that we would have to go ahead and approve that, if that's the direction we wanna go, I don't know if we wanna have further discussion about it and then come to a decision.
Maybe that, cause I think more than just me should have, I think some of the council people, I mean, even if it's just two in me, but I think they should also have, you know, I think I should have to go to at least two people and say, this is the problem I'm having, this is, what do you guys think?
Provide a list and.
Yeah, because I don't think it should be up to me.
So I think what it is, is this is the information we needed to understand better what you offer. What we need to do next is have a discussion with ourselves. And, and figure out how we would want to implement utilizing your services, and then, and then go from there. And we've got your contact information, so um unless anyone else has anything, I don't have anything else. But certainly thank you guys for coming.
Okay, if you have any other questions, feel free to call either one of us.
Not in all likelihood, your future contact will be our borough manager, Barb Harp.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. We'll be a touch one later.
Okay, right.
Thanks, appreciate it. Good people have to go out to Barb's house, cause we're scared of Barb.
I'm scared of him.
Yeah, I am. Alright, um we're gonna move on to the mayor's report, Mayor.
Um I don't have time, but I just wanted to um first commend everyone in the community for all the amazing work for Aldebecker, it was a really, a great um thing that everyone came together. Fortunately, it didn't work, so I couldn't go, but I had a lot of people who came into Log Yard and said, wow, that was really something. We just came from there, so um I think that's reflective of, of how amazing our community is to put together that. Um I, suddenly, I um signed a proclamation for the library honoring National Library Week last week, and I just really, I thought, um, everything that I said, that the library is doing such amazing things for our community. And Kelly, you um are really doing such great things for, for our state community, so that was really nice. Um I had a complaint from a resident who lives on Anderson Street about the state of Anderson Street, and I know that we think we probably have sent out some um ordinance sort of things to people on Anderson Street, but Barb, I was just gonna maybe touch base with you and see, but we can follow up with some of those folks and just try to, you know, to street a little bit, I know there's a lot of vehicles and tires and that kinda stuff down there, but um somebody should talk about that. And then the other thing is, I know Memorial Day is coming up, but um I, I talked to Mike and just, um I mentioned the idea, I think we talked about this last year, of doing the parade like maybe the other way around and having the ceremony down there, um they don't wanna do that, but I, and I said, okay, let's just try to make sure that whoever the speaker is, they want them to keep it brief, so that we don't have another incident like last year, a long time with the road closed, so. Um that's just, that was the only thing there, but yeah, that's what I have.
Alright, thank you very much.
Question what? Who did you speak to about perhaps reversing the, the parade?
I just mentioned it to Mike when we were talking about doing, I don't think, I think that they had maybe, I don't know, Brett, I, I don't know.
It was discussed last year about trying to do something as far as.
Yeah.
Going west, the east, the south, east, or west.
Down at the Veterans Club.
Yeah.
I think that maybe somebody will look into next year, I know that they have the, the stones and stuff, or down at the gazebo, so I don't think that anyone really wants to switch it to down there, but I mean, I, I'm not, again, like, I'm not really super involved with anything. But I don't know if folks who are having those conversations, it might be worth thinking about what that would look like potentially next year, or just not wanting that road to be closed.
Yeah, there was only a discussion between different members at one point, and it never really went anywhere.
Yeah.
Somebody kinda dropped the ball last year, because there, when you put the parade permit in, you put the detour in too, so somebody, that shouldn't have been stopped, there's a detour that goes around.
Yeah.
And you tell the state that when you get your parade permit.
Uh this year, I mean, have they contacted anybody as far as fire police and traffic control? Have you been contacted? Has anybody been contacted?
I said, Matt, do a fire police, we're gonna do it, not realizing you don't have fireplace. So somebody's gonna have to get somebody to.
A discussion was had on possible special police, has that gone anyplace?
No, I need to call, I think you need to talk about, I think they're just gonna do it for the Swedish Festival, so it's not really gonna be do it for Memorial Day.
Cause when I talked to Dan Barles, so maybe a month ago, um they were uncertain as to whether they'd even be able to have a parade order down there, because if we can't stop the traffic and reroute it, um we can't do the parade.
Thought in regard to this, Governor?
We have received a letter from the festival committee that our services as far as fire police will not be needed.
For the fast Swedish festival?
Swedish festival?
Or for some memorial?
Not from, Swedish festival.
Oh, I see.
We have not done anything for memorial.
So you haven't heard anything about that?
No.
Okay.
Uh the festival, as I said, they sent us a letter stating that we won't be needing our services, the fire department services.
Now, I know, it, it is, it was discussed when the fire police was winding down, that when possible, if there was a fire police need, the department members could help with that. Is that still something? So if Memorial Day, as an example, we needed some assistance, and we got a letter to you, or whoever is supposed, needs to get a letter to you, did that, is that possible?
Yeah. We could do that.
And has anybody actually?
So do I need to send a letter to you guys stating Memorial Day, we need some fire police, or, okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
And has anybody from the Legion reached out to anybody in an official capacity and said, this is the time, this is what we wanna do, and you're just assuming that we'll take care of it?
They stopped down here and asked me for a parade permit, and I said, and what hours, and they said exactly like last year. So I have the parade permit, it's already been put in, I've already been issued it.
Does that include the detour?
Yes.
So we just need?
Yeah, because without it, they won't give you one.
Right, well, I just, you know, because last year it got.
It was in last year's parade permit.
But there was nobody there enforcing or, or routing it around, right?
I don't know.
No, I think they were routing it, I think it was just long, wasn't it?
I was off with my leg.
It was, cause we were getting phone calls.
Yeah.
They were backed up across Lance Corners.
They were not happy.
I was off with my leg, so I don't know what.
Yeah, there were phone calls coming in down here, it was not pretty. Um so if we get a letter to you, or the Legion, someone, you guys will be available to help us, to help them with the parade.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll, we'll.
So at the very least, there needs to be people at Duish and Knoburg and then.
Right, Anderson.
And, yeah, up on.
And if you don't have the manpower for all of it, we can talk about the special police or whatever other options are.
That's why, that's why I brought up these constables.
Yeah, and I knew that was an option too.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where that was.
That's why I brought up the potential use of the constables.
Yeah, that's also a cause, yeah, so we'll move forward from there, alright. Anything additional for the mayor's report?
No, I just didn't know.
Can I get any motions?
Motion.
Second.
Check motion, Brett second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Alright, we'll move on to the maintenance report.
Something was brought up to me by Rick, uh you reminded me of seeing this thing about the repair of the street signs. Who is, Barb, do you have any idea who is responsible for our, like, when there's a speed limit sign down?
Yeah, he had talked to me about it, um if it's on Route six or a state highway, Quishikaw, Route six, Bridge Street, it's the state.
Alright, and then he, as far as what about replacement where, like the speed limit signs, the uh reflectiveness is.
It would be up to them to replace it, yeah.
So that's who we have to contact.
And I told him who to contact.
Alright.
If he was asking, I said, I don't know, I said, with the way the state's throwing other things on us as far as, you know, saying, oh, no, you're responsible, you know, it's. No, the street signs are still theirs, on, on state routes, those are theirs, just take care of.
Alright, I have a comment about this, um from the Rotary perspective, I know the Christmas lights are removed and they have to be removed for the um trimming and all the, whatever on the bushes down there. But Rotary would like to know if it is possible that other than taking them down for that work, if they, we could then put them back up and leave at least the white ones up year-round in the park. And we have no problem if we know when that window's coming, cause we went down there ready to do it, and we missed, obviously, the borough guys already done it, um like when they're, when she's done now, we'd like to put them back up if we could.
The white ones?
The white ones, and then we just enhance for Christmas or whatever, but, but it, we think it adds something nice visually to the park.
I don't think it's terrible, as long as they're maintained and taken care of, you know, I mean, that. Everybody's looking, me, I've been taking care of the park since Dick passed, so, yeah, I mean, as long as you guys take them down before the trimming and put them back up and maintain them, they don't get ready or grown in.
She's only trimming once a year, right?
Uh other than those, other than the bushes around the edge, the spike guns, and maybe sometimes three times a year.
Anyway, we're just talking.
That's not what we're talking, just the trees.
Yeah, so, yeah, so as long as we could know when that's happening, we'd be happy to take them down and put them back up.
It'll be spring, so, April.
So that's my comment, if there's no objection, that sounds great.
Alright, another thing I wanted to bring up is, I know we can't get a street sweeper till July, or couldn't get it till July something, so we said, you know, you know, stop that idea. Is there any way we can reach out to the state to see if we can get them, in the past, they would just come through anyhow and do it? And probably this year, cause we don't have one contracted to do it, they won't come through. Or normally, they come through and run it, and then we still have the street sweepers and, you know, do what we had to do, but uh it just, you know, it's a lot of work that I tried to have Rick and him.
Alright.
To run up and down the street, you know, with the backhoe and brooms, you know.
They seem to show up, but it, it has no rhyme or reason, sometimes it's July, they might be here tomorrow. I just don't know who we would reach out to other than the county manager and say, hey, do we have a, a schedule for that? You know what I mean?
I don't know who is over here, I know there's a Susan Scavero out there.
Should we um maybe just contact the, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say that, see if you can get a hold of the county manager and see when they got it. I mean, we did budget about three grand for a street sweeper, so if you do just, not thirty-five hundred, we can always rent the same piece of equipment they do for festival time with that little thing. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing the bobcat with the, with the dustpan on it. I mean, we started doing all the side streets, but that was just because it goes so fast, we don't necessarily need to.
Right.
But if we get it before Memorial Day, I know Hamlin Township was talking about the possibility of running one too, um that, that's. But if we get it before Memorial Day, I know Hamlin Township was talking about the possibility of running one too, um, that, that's, that's what we used to do, was just get one of those, as long as they have the one with the, with the dustpan, it's fine, but you can't just have one with the broom and blowing up right inside, so.
Do you think Kane would bring theirs over? They just bought a brand new one.
I don't know, we had an issue, uh, a couple of years ago, and, I mean, there, there's potential, but that was not without a cost either.
Well, within our budget, it'd be worth asking maybe, on what they would charge.
Man, I don't wanna put thirty-five hundred dollars in it.
No, don't tell them that.
But you know, if we, like, maybe reach out to Don Payne and say, you know, we were gonna rent one?
What did we pay back then, Brad, was it like seven fifty?
It was like five hundred, I think, if we did it, it was like five hundred.
So, we charge, we charge in one day's rent.
I mean, especially if we're really only concerned primarily about saying bare minimum, we just wanna do six.
That's what we're talking, right? I mean, if I reach out to him, it's just to do Main Street.
Yeah, so I would, I would think we, well, but not to clean all that up, it's adopted for trash pickup, adopt a highway.
It's not?
No, it is.
We don't sweep streets.
Yeah, we don't sweep. Okay, so I'll check with the county manager first, and then.
Yeah, see if they have highways for garbage.
Appreciate that, yeah.
The issue, the issue we had before, when, when there was an issue with Kane came over, they had their older street sweeper, they had a different maintenance supervisor, Rick wasn't really pleased with the way things went. It got in the newspaper, Mr. Payne was not pleased, it got brought up in a public meeting, and made the newspaper, so I wouldn't be surprised if they declined, but hopefully, you know, may, maybe, you know, it does make the newspaper.
Doesn't hurt to.
At least we get some options, yeah, see what's out there, so, thanks Barb for doing that. Alright, any additional in the maintenance report? Uh, accept the motion?
A motion.
Second.
Chris, then Frank, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You want the manager's report, Barb, any additional from what's written?
Nope.
Yeah, Port Kane Division Street, that's, I got called by Joe Ferrano today, he's moving his equipment in town.
I was gonna say, he got a demolition permit today, he's moving his equipment in tomorrow.
That's awesome. There's been some grumbling again.
Oh, the ramp, Barb, two, I've got Lance, just, I ran into Lance, we got, um, the Catholic churches has contacted state police about that abandoned car in their parking lot up there. And he asked, he missed the call from the trooper that called him back about, you know, what they, they wanted to know what he wanted to do with it, and he doesn't care, just get it out of there.
Right.
You know, so, uh, he said he'll know more after tomorrow, after he talks to the police officers and, you know, they took the, took it on, so, uh, hopefully, we'll see it gone here shortly.
Good.
Alright, any additional questions, comments, concerns?
I have to have a motion to do something with the health insurance, so.
Yeah, um.
I'll give that to Chris, you know, it's her baby.
Oh, thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion that we, um, I, let me rephrase this. The insurance has increased by sixteen percent, when Barb did the budget, she did the increase at sixteen percent from June to December, so I believe we are good on that, so I'd like to make a motion that we keep the same insurance policy for our employees at that cost. And I'd also like to know what everybody feels about, right now, we put twenty-one hundred dollars on a health savings card for the employees, the, for the deductible, it was raised to two, two thousand two hundred dollars. That's extra hundred dollars, which would be an extra three hundred dollars that we didn't have in the budget, but I think it's a good idea for our employees to be able to cover their full deductible. So I'd like to make a motion to increase the HSA account from twenty-one to twenty-two hundred dollars per person.
I'll second that motion, question on the third?
I have a question.
Seconded, discussion.
So it's not in the budget, where's the money coming from?
We had the increase of how much in the budget?
Sixteen percent.
And it came in at sixteen?
At sixteen percent.
Three hundred dollars of that, I think we can eat three hundred dollars and find it.
I'm just curious where it's coming from.
It's gonna come from things that work.
If you don't have the answer now, you can always provide it next month, I mean, we gotta pay it no matter what.
Well, we have to approve it to pay it, we can't just not approve it.
I would say from a financial standpoint, you know what your budget is?
Yes.
We're spending three hundred dollars more than was budgeted, so if everybody spends everything that they were allocated, we're gonna be short by three hundred dollars, that's not usually the case.
No, that's three hundred dollars a month.
No, 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 total, total, for the year.
Oh, it's just three hundred dollars.
Each, each, the deductible for each employee will go for twenty-one to twenty-two hundred.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Right now, we're paying twenty-one, so we're.
And it just doesn't matter?
It's a small amount that, the, the guys and everybody, they do a pretty good job of coming in just enough under budget in a lot of areas, I don't think, I think three hundred dollars will be that challenge.
And if we don't get a street sweeper, there's thirty-five hundred dollars there we can use towards it.
Or we get it for less than thirty-five.
Or we get it for less than thirty-five hundred dollars, so we can cover that one.
Alright, so, there is a motion, Chris, there is a second, Brett, any further discussion? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Question on the borough manager's report?
Yes, sir.
Refresh my memory, where, where are we on the, uh, money for E and, E and M engineering to, uh, for developing designs, it was, did we act on that?
No.
We talked about it last month.
You did, you said, get a hold of them, if we wanna do that, that's something we're gonna have to put out, is what we decided, if we're gonna do a grant.
The grant opens?
I mean, it makes no difference to me, it's just you can't put into that sidewalk grant without it.
Yeah, alright, the grant, the grant, the grant opens on the twenty-first of May, and it closes when?
You need designs. Middle of July.
So, if, if we, if we wanna go for the grant, we have to spend approximately six thousand dollars for the engineering. Yeah, okay.
Well, even if we don't go for the grant, and I, I had talked to Jason and Chris and Barb briefly about this. We had our meeting for the final inspection of the sidewalk project, that was a nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar grant, correct?
Yeah.
The borough laid out two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in engineering and acquisition of right of way, and the acquisition of easements, the payments to all the individuals. We obtained it in two thousand eighteen, and it still hasn't finished, and we're in twenty twenty-three, and we're looking to be around fifty to sixty thousand dollars over budget when it's done. So, we're three hundred and ten, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars into this for what we have done, and all the years, and all the extra that has to go into the state, that's a federal, uh, grant being administered by the state. We gotta have a concept of where we wanna go on the design, Brandon, that's gonna cost us six grand roughly. I'm interested in reaching out to different contractors and seeing what real world construction costs to replicate what we have up here from Anderson Street, Chestnut on both sides, and then going on the other way. What it would actually cost once you get alphabet stoop and the state and all of the different, uh, processes that have to go through there, because for instance, to change things like, uh, in front of the cafe. Well, we have to abide by, uh, the ADA standards to build something, all we really had to do was have a thirty-six inch, less than two percent slope. And then on the stuff that's, that's not the ADA path, we can do whatever we need to, but it would take two weeks and approvals and reengineering that cost us thousands of dollars, just the, uh, just the railings at the ca, the cafe cost an extra nine grand. Plus the extra engineering on, on redesigning it, three times it was redesigned, where if we go ourselves and get a price, maybe it only costs us four hundred fifty thousand, or three hundred fifty thousand to do that section, we're still gonna be on the hook for two hundred and fifty in engineering. Why, why deal with all that, and then the extra, at least we'll know where it's at, maybe we do one side, then do the other. Um, because at this point in time, we're either tapping into the CDs, or we're taking out a long term loan to get this done. I say myself, tap into the capital improvement account, pay for the six grand to get a, a design of it, and then take that to contractors and go, what can you do this for? Once we have an idea and a design, then we can put it out the bid, and we can decide if we wanna do it ourself, or put in for that, uh, for that grant, because just with, with all the hoops we had to go through, I could rip my hair out, you know?
And I feel like we're pretty confident we wanna do this, I know the citizens want us to finish the project, especially past.
Oh, that's the worst section, Anderson is the worst section.
And that's part of our thing, we should have safe sidewalks and safe roads above everything.
So, it feels like regardless, there's an option, but the, the six thousand should be approved either way.
I can't go out to a contractor, without, hey, you do, I, I need something that this is a rendering, this is what we want, apples, apples, X amount in linear feet of concrete, so wide, X amount of this and that, so we can move forward. And I think that, you know, what do you think, Tom, I mean, I think we can get this done for a lot less than, uh, one more three million.
Well, like you said, regardless, we have to have that, and be able, like you say, because every contractor would say, well, I need something to compare apples with apples, so.
Yeah, so make your motion.
Make a motion that we take the, uh, money for the E and M engineering fifty-eight hundred and change out of the capital improvement account, and get a rendering.
I'll make, I'll second. Alright, a motion from Brett, seconded by Chuck, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Alright, is there any reason why, I'm just interested.
You don't.
I didn't have to, I mean, I'm just wondering, when somebody asks.
It seems like an awful lot of money flying around all of a sudden, and.
Especially considering there's an answer, just wondering.
I mean, it just seems like there's an awful lot of money flying around recently, and it's, I don't know.
Um, any?
I mean, you wanna spend, you wanna spend the money that you got in CDs, that's great, if, you know.
Alright, any further discussion?
Six grand here, five hundred there, just keep going, you know?
On the borough manager's report?
Twenty-four thousand to, what?
The borough manager's report, I'm looking for a motion to accept the borough manager's report. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Chris, Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are moving on to approval of minutes, if you want to flip them over, if there are questions or corrections, they will stand approved as presented.
On the financial statements, um, we still owe the ARPA account forty thousand dollars that we took up from the beginning, to get us through until we got our taxes. Um, I'd like to make, make a motion that we take forty thousand dollars of our revenue and put it into the ARPA account, so we have paid that, to know where we really stand with everything.
Okay. Chris has made a motion to.
I'll second that.
Brett seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna assume the minutes are good.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
We are going to move into the treasurer's report, the payment of bills.
I skipped ahead.
Anyway, has anything additional to what Chris had? She also did send, everyone should have an updated budget that she sent out?
I just gave it out, sorry, I didn't send it out.
Well, I sent out, but she handed it out. So I guess if there's any questions for that, that could be brought up here as well.
Barb, Chris, do you have any comments on the, uh, on the revenue that, that, that what was, you know?
I think everything, she's doing a really good job managing everything, um, the one thing is if we do not rent the, the equipment, the street sweeper, that does give us a little buffer for stuff the rest of the year. Um, that could be used to cover maybe some of the trucker areas that we weren't, we weren't expecting. Last year, so, um, other than that, no, I think everything looks really good.
Hey, Chris, uh, the ARPA, repaying that slipped my mind. I think we are, adjust my, uh.
You wanna take out the ARPA money?
It's a new project, you can't use it.
I'll go for that.
You can't use it out of the old money, you know, for an existing project, we can't use it, but for a new project.
When I did the, okay, when I did the, I just had to do the yearly report on ARPA, the funds are going to that pocket park is what I reported.
All forty thousand of it? Okay.
The rest of it, the rest of it went for, um, the designs, oh, Jesus, what was it?
Really? Forty thousand dollars?
I had two projects.
We did take the whole forty, but yeah, between everything we did.
I mean, I can add a project this year, I can add that if you want, and don't.
I mean, we got forty-five hundred, that would pay most of the, uh, stuff, let's look at, leave it alone, and bring it up next May, that's not like we're gonna spend it.
I mean, the pocket park money isn't due for a little bit anyway.
You have to report where you're gonna put it, you have to put the project in and report where the money's gonna go.
It's gonna go, right?
Right, I'm saying if we wanna change it, we could.
I can add another project next year if I have to, yeah.
Well, let's, let's look it all over, don't change the motion or anything, let's, let's sit down and look at the numbers and see where we're at, because.
Well, because some of the ARPA money went to the.
But didn't you pay them up at the park?
Yeah, there was stuff done at the park that was done, and I used, like, twenty thousand there.
I know what we took out, it's.
It was eighty-four thousand dollars that came from ARPA.
Yeah.
What?
It was eighty-four thousand dollars that came from ARPA totally.
Right, and twenty thousand was used on the park for its various projects.
Well, let's, let's sit down, do a breakdown, I'll, I'll look at it, we don't need to get into it now, I was just like, ever gonna push that forty, I didn't realize it was coming.
Sorry, I should've told you earlier.
Oh, that's fine, it's, it's just.
Alright, treasurer's report and payment of bills, any further discussion on that? Uh, accept the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you approve both?
Yes.
Chris makes the motion?
I second.
Brett seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey Barb, how many people we have signed up for spring cleanup?
Nobody yet.
Nobody yet, I'm just curious.
Alright, moving on to the committee reports, maintenance of streets and buildings.
I'd like to discuss the maintenance report as far as some of the things, concerns that we have as far as like the streets clean up and, uh, signs issues. Brett, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I've got, I've been working on, uh, one thing. Rick and I have been looking at the possibility of divesting of our twenty twenty pickup truck, we have some issues with it. Right now, I have a township committed at, uh, fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars to outright buy that truck, we owe, it was fourteen thousand, but every month that goes by, it's probably about thirteen. Looked at different dealerships and options, these F five fifties now have ballooned from about sixty thousand dollars when we first, when I got on board, we first purchased a five fifty, it was about sixty thousand, now we're at a hundred and twenty-five thousand for an outfit, full model truck. So, we're looking at the possibility of just getting a one ton pickup truck without a dump bed, uh, keeping the one dump bed, and possibly going with a spreader mounted unit like a lot of the commercial plowing companies use. We had a three fifty when they first came out, it had torque converter issues, but when you have a dump bed that's steel, and you're putting, overloading it by two, three tons, you know, that's an issue. Right now, just looking at it, kicking the tires, um, problem is computer chips, it's very hard to come by any trucks, even thirty-five hundreds, I just got one today that Rick found to buy outright a new thirty-five hundred with a plow. Central, it wouldn't be central hydraulics, it'd be electric over hydraulic, um, and it's just at sixty thousand, so we could divest of the truck that we have, get a brand new truck, and basically, we pay off the loan by the time, you know. If it's two months from now, we'd be down to around ten thousand dollars, um, there is some issues, we're gonna continue looking into it, and when I have something to officially, uh, put out there, I'll put it out there. Right now, it's just something we're thinking about, and I've talked to Chuck about it quite a bit, talked to Rick, we're worried that that five fifty's going to become a problem with the electrical issues, so, we'll see how it goes. Other than that, I have all.
Alright, thank you, anything else, Tom? Finance, Chris?
Um, just that I did hand the budget out to everybody for everyone to look at, um, I'm really impressed with how well the budget is looking, I was a little bit stressed out at first, thinking we were really overspending our budget, but I can see I made a mistake in that, adjusting that assessment, so I'm glad to see that. Um, also, um, we covered the health insurance for the employees, and other than that, that's really all I have right now.
Alright, uh, personnel.
I have nothing, Barb, do you have anything, uh?
No, everything seems to be going well.
We're good.
Alright, parks?
The Heritage wants to buy a couple of baby changing stations and a swing set for the park. I was given the impression there needs to be discussing on it.
Yeah, because I did have some questions.
There were some questions that were brought up, so, yep.
Um, with the swings that you got, the, the Heritage wants to purchase, does that include the swings, or is that just the frame?
It includes the swings.
Okay.
And two, there's two baby swings.
There's two baby swings and the four swings. Okay, um, how are you gonna, do you have the instructions to install it because I did get them online?
They will, I'm sure they will send us.
Because you need to have, um, four foot hole, deep holes.
Right.
With one foot round down inside to put the pipe with cement and gravel.
Absolutely.
So I guess I need to know, I am not against the swings, cause I'm not trying to think anybody that I'm against the swings, I just have to protect what I feel I need to protect. Because once we put the swings in and they're on borough property, they're our liability and so we have to make sure that they're installed correctly and they're inspected.
Right.
Cause I don't wanna be the one that gets the phone call and said, so and so's little one fell off those swings and got hurt because they weren't installed correctly, that's my major concern about all this. I am all for the park, I've always been for the park and sometimes when stuff is emailed, it gets taken out of context and it gets nasty because you're not talking to each other face to face, which I understand that. But that's my concern is that they're put in properly and that if you want the borough to help install those, we need a price on the aug, you're right, we need a price to see where we're gonna stand. If that's what you guys want from us to put those in, that's all I was trying to get at before. So, cause like you're gonna have to somebody, oh, you're gonna have, cause you can't cement them in place and then level them, you have to have a level field, yeah, everything has to be leveled with transit.
Yeah.
And then when they put it in, then you've gotta like pull them with the straps and everything to make sure they're plumb and square and before you cement them in and that's just what I'm worried about, if you have enough people who are qualified to do that. Isn't that something?
Yeah, I'm sure we'll find people that are, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna let just, you know, Tom.
Right, and I guess, um, before we put them, I just like to have, what, what your plan is for you guys and what you want from us, so we're on the same page and we're not going to each other's throats because somebody might have a question about something.
Oh, yeah, right, no, I agree, yeah.
It's even in your last name, so you gotta be.
I know.
Um, where, where are these swings?
Yeah, where are they gonna go, are they going behind like for third bases right there, or are they going in the back?
I would, I would. No, no, because you, are you talking where they do T-ball?
Yeah, they're not going back, they're right, they're going back on third base side.
No, no. No, because the sports boosters are going to use that.
Okay.
For T-ball and they wanna put up a fence and.
Okay.
And so I'm thinking, you know, more like over like where the, you know, where the, where the swings are now, just over a little bit. Like in that, that big area that's like through.
Closest to the pavilion or further from the pavilion?
But with third bases, if you're going down, I don't, I can only do stuff by the baseball field, if you're going down the third baseline.
Yeah, whatever, I mean, I don't care where they go.
He's talking more towards the first baseline is what.
You're talking more this way.
I'm talking more like toward where the bleachers are out there.
That would be down the first baseline.
That's right, okay. Is there room to put them there?
Well, no, not the main bleachers.
No, I know where you mean, the ones that are in the outfield, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, a question that Barb and I had when we were looking at it, cause we weren't able to find it, is, um, it had, um, it did not have anything about weight limit, it had like an age.
It had an age limit.
Yeah, it's a hundred and thirty pounds.
How much?
It's a hundred and thirty pounds, a twelve year old, the ninety five percentile is a hundred and thirty pounds.
It's a hundred and thirty pounds, yeah.
So a mom could sit on this child and swing.
Or if there's a big, ten year old, then you're gonna have issues.
A big club, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have the other set swings.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to somewhere put that on there. Oh, yeah, we can put, you know, right on the, one of the bars or something, you know. I realize that there's the other swings, but you know how kids can be, be like, no, that's new, I wanna put it on there.
There'll have to be signs probably up above, something that, that can't easily be, uh.
Taken down?
Yeah.
Or, or defaced.
Yeah, yeah.
On, on, on both sets, you know, what, if there's an age slash weight limit.
Well, there's a, it's a bit weird. Two to twelve is what the age. The liability is not falling on the. Right, you know, right. Oh, right, absolutely.
And that was my only concern when I sent the email, asking questions, it wasn't to stir everybody up and be considered a troublemaker or whatever, it's just because.
You're a troublemaker anyway.
Some people think so. Um, so that was my only thing, is I had concerns.
Yeah.
Because I spent a lot.
Well, my concern was where they were being placed, cause I always had a rumor come back to me that what I had, one of my scouts do, working on his Eagle project, uh, sanding those all down and repainting them when those were coming out, new ones were going in.
Oh, no, no, the old ones are staying in and that's good, and that's good that, you know, you've got an Eagle Scout that's going to do that, right?
Yeah, he's already painting, yeah.
Yeah, good, cause that's what we had talked about was sanding it and peeling the old ones and maybe replacing the swings if they needed replaced.
Are there any, um, additional questions or concerns about the baby changing stations, Frank had provided the installation, uh, equipment?
No, I have no concerns.
So she can buy them.
So it, 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 it sounds like we're in a place where they can be purchased when we get to the point of installation, obviously, we wanna stay involved with that whole process.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we want you guys involved in it.
Yep. Right, so as long as that's understood, then, then I think it's.
And the borough's gonna pay for the installation, right, the, for the station? That, I mean, if, you know, that would be a suggestion, I mean. I think Frank stated that it could come out of the twelve hundred dollars.
The parks fund.
Yeah, the parks fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's taken well under that.
Yes.
Good.
No, um, the grant can't pay for stuff.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Because it's ours, we don't mind, we have a little bit to do, so.
There's money.
I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, yeah.
And I also would like to mention that I believe Barb has already purchased from your meeting minutes that you submitted, um, the nylon nets for the park.
Okay, yeah, the sports boosters were very adamant about the.
Yeah. And they also.
I got new ones and they're blowing the doors. Okay, okay, good, I will let. As it gets a little darker at night, they'll be able to see them. Good.
And then, um, she also purchased a weed killer to go around the fence.
Okay.
So the, cause it's so hard to weed that for ourselves, it's a pain in the butt, so we got, she did purchase the, the, the formula to kill all those weeds.
Okay.
Um, and our guys, you saw on the report, did a bunch of work up there, so we're really trying to be proactive with you guys and working through.
Yeah, that's what we need, is team, teamwork.
Yeah.
All of that sounds wonderful, Frank, any additional on parks?
Are we gonna order the swings or are we holding off?
For the coalition?
Yes.
We, I think we just agreed we could order them.
No, we were talking about the baby changes.
No, I think we agreed we could order all of it.
Yeah, yeah, Chris said order it all.
Alright.
Cause so we make sure and have a plan to install it, that's all I ask.
I just, I just said as long as we're in the whole process until they're up, then we're good to go.
Absolutely.
Well. Those were the two major things really with the, out at the parks meeting.
The maintenance. Yeah.
Getting your stuff ordered and getting them all rolling.
They're the ones that installed the last swings, right, maintenance, some of them.
Sounds like we have a couple of stuff. The, um, boosters.
Now those.
That would be wrong.
That'd be right, I don't know.
But that's what I'm saying though, it was maintenance. I would have to look into it. They did it, yeah, cause you did mention at the last meeting that maintenance. They installed the playground equipment.
Not the swings, the, that big one with the both slides and.
Oh, okay, alright, okay. Can you look back and see who, I mean, I don't know how those have been there. I don't see if I can, but it's been there a long time. I'll see what I can find out.
Alright.
Yeah.
Frank's got more about the locks.
The boosters wanna change the locks on the bathrooms, they want them to actually be codes instead of keys.
Correct.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
What kind of money, I mean, is that something?
I guess they're gonna pay for it.
As long as we have the codes.
I think they're, they're gonna get it so the code can be changed every year.
No, I thought it was, they can be changed often as you want to.
Yeah, they can be changed every week. They would have it on a schedule.
So when, when would they be open and who would, who would be responsible for opening and closing them?
Whoever has the code.
It sounds like, yeah, whoever, so.
So we wouldn't have to lose a key to have a code, that's it. And then you can change it every year, so.
And if there's ever.
Let's say they left it to me and I was using it for something, but you didn't want me using it next year.
As soon as there was, I, cause I, when she brought it up, I said, as soon as there would like be an issue in the bathroom, we could go change the code.
A, a lot of these.
And then re-control who has access.
A lot of those code ones also have a key, so if somebody rented it, we don't necessarily have to give them the code, we give them the key.
You can.
So.
Okay.
You know what I mean, and then that way, that minimizes the amount of people who have the codes, you know, changing them.
But it, it will make, it would make things easier for them, um, for their people to not have to sometimes wait for someone to come with a key, so. It's not a bad idea, I don't think.
And I think Ed Fisher had stated that on the inside, it would require a push bar.
Right.
For emergency.
But they had priced it all out of this. In case someone would get locked in.
They're gonna pay for that, the sports boosters?
I would assume that they're gonna pay for it all.
If, if they're not, then it would have to come back here.
They would need to come back, yeah. Talk about it.
Yeah, but, so that's where that's.
But that's the plan, another plan is to bring back the old where somebody locked up the parking thing.
Yeah, we brought that up here before and it was a matter of, um, Ed Fisher said that back in the day, he was in charge and he's willing to do it again, of managing a volunteer force to close the gate at night. And then our, if our guys could open it in the morning. And so he made that proposal, he'd be willing to do that, cause he's usually out, if he's not available, he's willing to be the contact, point of contact person to make sure someone does do it.
Is that really gonna help, I, I mean, I should, agree it should be locked, but a lot of the damage I would think will come from the four wheelers coming up from the water.
It's not gonna stop all of it, but it's gonna stop, cause there are people who drive back there.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
And they've been seen out there kind of doing whatever, it's like, if, if you can just cut down on some of it and at least give the perception.
That we're doing it.
That we're on top of it, 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 if it can cut it down at all and it's a minimal effort, um, I'm, I'm for trying it.
Personally, I think it's gonna be a waste of time, it's not gonna work, but as long as the volunteers wanna do it, that's fine, it'll be the, the new move until.
So we're good with that, volunteers actually locking.
What time are they gonna lock it, at dusk, at night lock?
Have we even, have we even looked to see if it has a functioning lock, if anything, right now, just closing it?
Well, we could actually get a combo lock too.
We could get a lock on it.
I believe they have it locked open, cause people were messing with it.
Oh, that's probably true. Okay, is it, do you know if it's a key lock or a combination lock?
Key lock.
No idea.
It's a key lock.
Maybe get a combination lock and then you just need a number.
Alright, well.
I was just gonna have to, with the baseballs going on or somebody has it running, make sure people aren't trying to close it, like, the kids will be coming in and locking it in the afternoons and.
With the combo lock, you lock it open.
Yeah, if we can do the same thing, that's, that's, we lock it open and we lock it closed, it just keeps locking it. So. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Some kind of combo lock for that?
I guess look at what's down there and see what, what would work.
Do we have locks here already?
I don't know. Not combinations, they can go buy a combo lock.
Yeah.
But, and seven, eight locks, give it six months, we'll be doing it.
Right, so look into the lock situations, see where's that?
I guess if you really want me to, pretty sure we can just have a good combination lock.
That's very much my idea. That's right. Um, alright, any additional on parks?
I don't believe so, is there anything else that was possible?
No, I don't, I think that is everything.
I think that was the, the most important things, especially with, you know, all of a sudden the bathrooms have codes to get in.
Alright, we'll move on to the fire department, um, Barb and, oh, actually Barb at McLoppick talked to Lewis Run a little bit about their numbers at the houses to kind of find out how they did it. And, um, forgive me if I'm misremembering, but my understanding was that they just kind of managed it through enforcing existing ordinances about reflective numbers.
Well, they didn't have an ordinance in place, they developed an ordinance.
Well, we have an ordinance.
And then they, they let their residents know there was an ordinance and they all had to get signs and they all went through a fire, the fire department sold it for fifteen dollars a piece. And they made it mandatory for everyone to buy it.
So that is an option.
Okay, how does your ordinance read?
Get you a copy of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't put all, it wouldn't put all the numbers on the streets, for sure, cause of, uh, within so far, there can be.
If your house is so far away from the street, it's gotta be up by the street.
Okay, that's what I want to see.
But it might, the whole thing is, it might.
It's like thirty feet.
Yeah.
The house is thirty feet from the road, like my house, mine would be off the front, it would be reflective, uh.
I think you're talking.
I had an issue with, would have been.
That's where, if we could change that, that's where it'd be easier for us going down the road with the headlights hitting and.
And that would need to have you guys read the ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, that, you know, like put them on, we're talking four foot poles, down about four foot in the air. Then have your reflective sign where you can read on both sides, you've got letters on both sides that are reflective, it's one sign, it's just letters on both sides. That way, don't matter which way you're coming, you're gonna be able to see that, let that.
And you're envisioning that everywhere in town?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we run a call up on High Street Fire. Wouldn't have to be blowing across this way, I come up across this way and I never seen a smoke.
Yeah.
Cause it was blowing towards Route Six and I never knew where four, four High Street was.
Okay, so.
You know.
So we require changing our existing ordinance, if we wanted to go that route.
That's what it looks like they have in, uh, going through Lewis Run and fought, and some of the townships down there and, and they're on both sides and yeah, it's gonna be an expense for the homeowners, but.
Well, you know what, why don't I get ahold of Joanne over at Lewis Run, get a copy of their ordinance, cause they just did it and see how it reads.
Cause their, their signs, I mean, they're, they're very noticeable now when you go up two nineteen.
They're all the same height.
Check with Brad for township too, that's what they did in theirs.
Yeah, and, and, you know, yeah, it's a one time expense, but man, I can sure see the value in the, in, in.
Well, cause I found signs somewhere, I told Jason for us to do all of them throughout town, it was like, what, forty four hundred bucks?
Yeah.
If the borough did it.
I didn't compare it to your numbers, I know you guys have.
That didn't include holes.
Your own group.
Actually, the company is.
Well, you just bring it, we'll get the ordinance and get all the information.
Yeah, your, your company is, uh, interstate sign home.
With the numbers.
Yeah, and they're, yeah, they're.
Scotty, would it make any difference if the ambulance association could help out, because they can't find houses here?
Well, this is what, this is the, both of our, our department, well, all EMS working together.
But it's, it's, the cost is looking right now on the property.
Yeah, you could get the sign for.
But there's a sign and there's a post and then there's.
See, we weren't supplying the post, we were.
I understand, but if we're gonna try to enforce it, we can at least be able to tell them where to get it.
Yeah.
And then installation, hopefully, so we need to figure out the logistics.
They just go right in the yard and get installed.
There's, there would be recommendations of where and all of that, so I think we need to start with Barb, get the ordinance to see how Lewis Run managed theirs.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll go from there and keep moving forward on it, uh.
Um, all in agreeance with this, I mean, it, it's tough when you're going down, you know, you, you're going twenty five mile an hour down the road and you're looking at houses trying to see your signs. And they're not reflective or anything and they, and they're little two inch, it's a pain, it's hard.
Um, the only other thing that I know about the fire department is I believe the new sign's coming up soon, right? I feel confident, because see the construction part is done.
That's a one step forward, two step back for me.
Hey, we're gonna have a sign by the end of twenty twenty seven, how about that? Okay, anyways, I, there's nothing else for fire department that I'm aware of.
I have a quick question on fire departments, see, I had to step out, uh, I don't recall having seen a financial report from them lately, have we received any?
I've got, I'm telling.
Okay.
You guys wanna, if you want copies, I can forward them to you.
I, I, as long as they're still being submitted and everything, okay, thank you, that's all.
There, there, okay, alright.
One of my questions I had was a house on fourteen Division, the old mine, you know, was being tore down, that lady did contact me last week. I gave her a couple things that have it tore down or, you know, so they want us to burn, I said, well, we can't do that.
Go for those, dude.
Yeah, I just saw that out tonight, which is great, because that's, there's some people, it's starting to become actually a, uh, safety, safety thing with all the tin and stuff coming through. It's, you know.
And I had, whether it's a rumor or not, I was told there were some kids crawling around there, so.
It's a possibility to, I know one time I come up to go home and, uh, the car at the top back was in the middle of the driveway between the two houses. So whether it drifted there or.
So he was, the guy was gonna buy it off of him.
Okay, I don't know, it was just moved, that's all.
Alright, we're gonna move on to library, I feel like we've kind of covered everything, library relevance already, uh, the paving stones is a big one, so Kelly's gonna hit with Barb on that. Sewer.
Still falling downhill now.
Yeah, I don't have any answers either.
Our meetings are going back to this month, they'll go back tonight, five thirty Tuesday.
Which, I, I appreciate. It's hard to get up for those. Alright, uh, moving on to old business, um, bike racks is on here to ask if we can take bike racks off of here.
Yeah.
Yes.[1704.84]
Is it timed? I feel like it's.
Time.
Okay.
So, you, so what are you doing with bike racks?
Well, we already had talked about, we'll probably have bike racks as part of the amphitheater plan. Um, most of the bike racks that would go in town would be on private property, so it would be, uh, decisions for those people. Um, the trail has some there, and if something comes up again with them, uh, we can bring it back up. But for the linger here, there's no, nothing active and actionable on our end.
I invite to the bench, we got a couple thousand of those.
Plus, there's the issue of some of these bikes are so friggin' expensive, but just basic bike rack, it's gonna be enough for a lot of them. But, five-year plan for the borough building, um, there any, I think that's just kind of hanging out.
Yeah, I haven't, I gotta give the guys.
I wanna leave it there as a reminder, yeah. All right, um, options to promote Trail and Park of the Year, Mount Jewett, the banner's a great idea, so, um, we certainly are happy to work with you on that. We're, we're kind of keeping that on here just so we all remember. We could, but I know she wants to go on center. Well, she wants it on center, 'cause that's where the trail is.
Did you want it on center or main?
But if you did on main, you could point down center.
Yeah, would you be open center or main?
Well, but don't you guys put a banner up here for different occasions?
Well, you wanted to leave it up for a while.
Forever.
Well, I mean, for a long period.
Forever.
For a while.
I hear you, okay, no, that's fine.
I mean, like I said, I haven't even, I haven't even looked around town, it just came up at our meeting.
Unless, unless the most part.
Even till winter time.
All right.
Unless I gotta work where we get the festival.
So, that's good. Um, all right, so, anything we can do to, if it doesn't involve form, definitely.
Just keep your eyes open, I mean, if something looks good, like, hey, this would be a good spot, or.
Yeah.
We can even put something by Cusiaqua Avenue too, for that matter.
All right, house numbers, we already covered.
That might be a better idea.
Uh, new business, audit?
I just need you guys to make them.
To acknowledge it publicly in this meeting?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we acknowledge, that we are acknowledging and accepting our budget for year twenty-twenty-two, I mean, your audit.
Audit.
Audit, audit, sorry, I didn't even see, I haven't had a long lead.
Chris makes a motion to accept the audit, our knowledge that we received the audit?
For twenty, for twenty-twenty-two and also.
That was a, their only management thing they wanted done.
Well, we're accepting that.
Accepting and acknowledging.
We're accepting that we acknowledged?
We're accepting that this is our audit.
Audit.
That we received it and we're aware of it publicly in a meeting. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Second from Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Just to let you know, I put the advertisement in the paper of our audit as we're supposed to per borough.
Going, going through that and looking at it and, and understanding it but not understanding it, was there anything that, of, of note that we should be brought to our attention?
No, the audit looked good, looked very good, yes.
Very good, uh, that, that, that speaks well to our, our financial management team.
All right, next up, the Vacation Bureau kiosk, I know they've complained for years that we have nice prickly bushes right in front of their kiosk. Um, and they asked if we could do something about that again, and I think Brett, didn't you have any ideas?
Uh, so, one thing was take out the bushes, put a flower bed, that obviously adds cost to maintenance. So, I walked up there after I left here that day, and I took a picture of it. See where it sits, it sits directly this way, the bottom of the side's covered with those bushes. If we move it to the left, if it's any of the park, right behind the first flower pot, the lawn does a natural curve, it would still be facing Route Six, just at an angle, it's only on four-by-fours, it would be right in the entrance to the park, you put one piece of flagstone there, so you can step and access a, uh, brochure if there are any provided, and, and there you go. And the guys, Rick said, yeah, no problem, we can put it there, they were gonna move it, and they said, well, it's on the agenda, let's bring it up. Um, it wouldn't be a maintenance issue, we wouldn't have to deal with it, it's just simply move the sign, put, right, so here's what I'm thinking. Right here, at the entrance, cool, just, just facing at an angle. You know what I mean? It's still right on Route Six, it's right there, and they just moved the two four-by-fours, and we put a piece of flagstone down, so it's flat, somebody trips over stones, we're done. And if they don't like it, well, they can take their sign and put it wherever they want.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Everybody fine with that, we can move?
Sure.
Forward with it. All right. Um, anybody else have any to bring up, business-wise, it's not on here.